Elder City Council meeting to order. Tiff, please take the role.
Councilwoman Garvey.
Present.
Councilman Brennan.
Present.
Councilman Bundy.
Present.
Councilman Green.
Present.
Mayor Sykes.
Mayor Sykes is absent tonight. Okay, I will start with John Matthews, the presentation with the geographic information system. And then we will go to the Department head comments.
City Council. I'm honored and happy to be here tonight. Last week I was supposed to be here, but I had COVID, so I wasn't. In your packets, you will see the City of Mountain Home GIS strategic plan. So I'm here to explain what exactly that is and why you have a copy of it. And also let you know what even is GIS. So I have a little thing here to keep me on track. So GIS, this provides a foundation for mapping and analysis that is used in science and almost every industry. GIS helps users understand patterns, relationships, and geographic context. The benefits include improved communication and efficiency as well as better management and decision making. So what that means is by having and using GIS data, the city can and does provide outside engineering firms, realtors, developers, and planners up-to-date data that they need to help make the decisions that will affect projects and the city as a whole. This type of engineering and mapping is how not only engineering, but any project or information planning is done now and in the future. So by implementing this mapping into the daily operations of the city departments, we can move away from paper maps and to maps that are interactive and can be edited instantly. These maps and the data that can be added to them are virtually endless. By having this mapping software and data it provides will move the city of Mountain Home to an even playing field with the larger cities when it comes to new business, jobs, and how the growth and development of the city takes shape. So as I said, in your council packets, here's the GIS strategic plan that I wrote up. And I wrote this up mainly just for me, so I could keep myself on track and moving forward. So in a nutshell, you will see between pages two and five is the detailed yearly plan for myself. Then on page six is the summary of pages two through five. Page seven is the return on investments notes. Page eight lists the various data features and how many features that were gathered. And so you're probably wondering through all of this geeky jargon, why should you even be awake at page 10? Well, on page 10, it shows the cost savings to the city from years 2018 to 2022. And I list 2018 is because that's the year when I moved mainly from being the engineering technician and designing the civil engineering projects that the city does to mainly working full-time as the GIS administrator, which that's my title is right now. So on page 10, it lists the benefit cost, which is the total cost of having this data if it were prepared by an outside agency. So some of the cities that are about our size are smaller. They want to have a GIS map, or they want to have this data, but they don't have somebody that actually is there hired by the city doing it. So they have an outside agency come in, they take all the data points, they create all the maps and generate all the data, and then put it on the city's website. So I went out and I contacted some of these agencies, as well as the agency that develops and that we get our software from, because they too will come out and send somebody to actually be a field worker and gather all the data that you have for your infrastructure. So I found out what the cost would be to do that. And so I added that in. And then also, I have a chart that also shows the return or the savings the city has made by me doing this in-house. And that savings is over $1.25 million to the citizens of Mountain Home. So here on the city's webpage is a brand-new section, and it has the snowplow routes on here, which is just basically a PDF map. And it's going to show you where the main routes are for the snowplows. But the main map that we have here is the interactive GIS map. And anybody can come on here, you can turn things on, turn them off. You don't have to worry about deleting anything because you're just not able to do that. So here's the map, and it looks a lot like Google Earth. So what's the difference? Well, Google Earth, and this, the GIS data is data points that's generated specifically for an area. So you can, like a lot of times, the Forest Service or the BLM uses GIS data to track forest fires. And you're able to see it. And when we had the big fires, it was on the news and they showed maps of where it was going and how they predicted it. Well, they did all that through the GIS systems. So our GIS, it looks a lot like Google Earth, but it has specific information just for City of Mountain Home. So here's the city limits that we have right here. I'm able to take this data and email it to somebody like engineers or somebody else, and then they can take it, and they don't have to worry about scale or how they're going to fit it on their maps. They just put it on their maps, and it's all scaled instantly. It has on here, I added things like the healthcare. And I just did the hospital in that little block. I didn't try to find every single doctor and dentist in town. I just did the main ones. And here's the police station. And you can click on here, and it gives you the address and where it's at. It has things on here, and this is something that the garbage company just doesn't even have themselves. A map of, hey, when's my garbage day? You can click on here, and it will tell you. It has things like, if you're looking to move to town, what parks do we have? Well, you can turn it on there, and you can see the parks layer. Tells you where it's at. List the golf course, lists all our city parks. Also, it lists all the pathways that we have. And we can actually click on this information here, and it lists the name of the path, the length, the width. Is it attached to the road, yes or no? Where does it start, where does it end? It lists all the data for that. And we have this information for various things all over town, including, let's look at parcel data. Let me zoom back out, learn how to drive this. Let's just randomly click on anywhere here. I did not list on here the person's name who owns the property or the property value. I took that off. Some cities do. You can look on there and see that John Smith owns this property and it's worth $500,000. I figured if you want to know that bad enough, you can contact the county and they can tell you. But it lists the year it was made, how many bedrooms or bathrooms it has, the lot description, where it's at. You can go to the subdivisions. This is all of our subdivisions that we have in the city. And you can click on anywhere on here, and it will tell you the subdivision and how many parcels is in each. And until I started this, I didn't realize that we have several hundred subdivisions. Or there's areas that are not subdivisions, but they're just single properties that have houses on them. So I just classified those as Area 1 or Area, you know, 5. But all of these have how many parcels there are, the subdivisions' names. You can go through here and find the zoning for your area. And you might want to look to see, here's an R4. This is the specs for it. Or if you want to have more information, you can click on these two links, and they will take you to the web information that tells you what you can have in there. If you're looking to build something extra, it has all that information built in. So to help save somebody the steps of calling the building department or City Hall wanting to know this stuff, they can click on here and find out a lot of this information themselves before they even have to make a phone call. There's little things like the, like all the canals that run through town, and whether or not they're piped or not, as well as the infamous flood zone. And right there it is. And it will tell you what the zoning is for the flood zone, where it's located. And you can see for yourself, are you in the flood zone, are you in the floodway? Where are you at? What is this? And there is also things like the streetlights. So you can click on here, maybe your streetlight went out. You can find where it's at. It lists the address, what it's made out of, what it looks like. It lists the serial number. And who owns it. So if you're looking at this, the green ones are owned by the city. The orange-colored ones are owned by Idaho Power. All this data was collected in the field, walking to each one of these. So it wasn't just sitting in my office dreaming it up. I actually walked every one of these and gathered all the information. This information is all, so this is what is there for the public. For in-house, we also have information such as water lines and water valves and all the sewer information. And that is just for in-house. And it has the same, the depths of the water lines and when they were installed, if we have that information. And all that was gathered on the ground, out in the field, accumulating. And it has basically, this is something that is my career in a nutshell. And something I am very proud of, because what we have here is something that, well, right now, a lot of the guys in the water and the sewer departments have apps on their phone. So basically, they do not carry around paper maps anymore. They carry around their phones, they can click on it, and it will tell them exactly where they're at. And if they're looking for a water valve, how close they are to it. So in case it's under a bush or it's been paved over, they can look and say, well, it says I'm standing on it, but there's brand-new asphalt, so it must be underneath my feet. And it's going to tell them how deep it is. So if they're digging, they're going to know not to hit it because it says it's four feet deep. There's no reason to run right through the middle of it. So it's being used, the fire department uses it. And I know that back in the Development Services area of City Hall, they use the map every single day for various things. This map is compatible with anything that you will see in Boise or Meridian, Twin Falls, anywhere in the state. We have something to be proud of that we're one of the little kids, but we're playing in the big kids' ballfield. And that's why I want to just let everybody know about something that we have. So when you're asked, do you have GIS data? Why, yes, we do.
John, I have a quick question, if you don't mind.
Yes.
You mentioned the police and the, well, fire station is what you mentioned using it. Do they, does this decipher the areas of land that are just the small pockets of county? Because I know, like, when you're going out on a fire, we have these weird little areas that are county in between. And I don't know if that's something, is it being utilized or is that for help?
Other than, other than the city limits, I don't, it doesn't say whether or not it's county or city.
Okay.
The parcel would. If you click on something that's in the, that's for the parcel data, you'd have to then look at the parcel ID number.
Yeah. I just wasn't sure if it had that functionality or if that's something you could create to help them expedite calls or, I mean, they're pretty good at where they're going, but.
Yeah.
There are those weird little areas.
Little pockets.
That's the county house or county residence. And it's like, whoa, don't go there. So, okay, nice work.
But it's being used. And also, I just want to add that, and this is more on a personal note, that there is talk that I've heard that city employees are way overpaid and way underworked. And I would like to just say that is a personal insult to me, and it should be to anybody that works for the city. Because not just myself, but I would suggest someone go out with the city crews and see what the street department does. Not just for an hour or a minute, work all week. See what it's like to shovel asphalt in the middle of summer. Go out with the sewer department and find out what it's like to get raw sewage splash to back up in your face. Go out with the water and see what it's like to get a call out at 2:00 in the morning in January and stand waist-deep in water fixing a water line. The city employees work very hard, no matter what they do. And a lot of times, we're working, we're doing more with less. And so any thoughts of us being overpaid and underworked is an insult. And I don't know where these ideas are coming from, but research needs to be done to see what other cities are paying and what private industries pay. And you'll find out that in a lot of cases, they're paying a lot more than what we are able to right now. And so with that, I'd just like to say thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Yes.
John, incredible presentation. I appreciate all the information and the work.
Thank you.
You've gone to make this happen. I had no idea how many different layers of information you've been adding and tracking into the system, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
It is great.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I just want to give John a kudos. He brought this forward a couple of months ago and wanted a landing page on the website for the GIS to provide it to the public. In City Hall, we get questions often on garbage and where you're located. A lot of people are willing to go find it themselves. And so right away, we wanted to make sure John had a landing spot and got his hard work recognized, so.
Yeah, that's great. Yes, thank you. Okay. We will run down to Department head comments. Chief Moore.
President of the council, just four quick things. I hate to follow John, that was pretty good stuff, John. Our open house is this Thursday, it runs from 5 to 8. This Saturday, we are going to be training over at the Public Works, our training facility. We've got the company where we got the hydraulic tools, our rescue tools. We're going to be doing training over there from 8:30 to 3:30. This past Thursday, we installed two new probationary firefighters on the department. It's always nice to get fresh blood. And the last thing that I have for information is that on October 23rd through the 25th, we'll be pump testing and ladder testing our apparatus. So it's that annual time of year that we do those things.
Great, thank you, Chief. Chief Thompson?
Just two thanks to the council. Last Thursday, we did a cop event at Starbuck's Albertson. It's a pretty good turnout with the community, a lot of conversations later contacts we had there. Saturday, shout out to Barista, all three locations helped us raise our fundraiser for our and our trunk with the cop event. I don't have numbers as far as money, but they had over 500 customers in that three-hour time for all three events. So they're very happy to turn that as well. So thank the community for coming out to those events.
Thank you. Chris?
So a couple of things from the P&amp;Z world. We're working on some final plots. One of significance is Eagles Nest, some division that's on Air Base Road next to United Storage. They're moving forward that one. They've also submitted development plans for that one, so we're reviewing that right now. Mountain Down Custom RV up on the hill next to the pilot. They've submitted and are in the process of having a review for their development plans. So that project's moving forward. And then Fall Creek subdivision, which is south of town, past Silverstone, they've submitted their development plans, so we're seeing some movement on that. We've also had a few pre-development meetings. There's been some interest in the old D&amp;B Supply Building. There's a couple of different people that are looking at that one for some different things, which is pretty cool. Terry's Trucking RV is looking at doing some changes out there. T&amp;B Marine is looking at doing some changes at that location. Current owner is retiring, he understands he's selling. And so there's some things coming there. And then En Route Tire Service, which is out here on Highway 30, is looking at making some changes. So there's some big things happening in town right now.
Good, thank you. Shasta?
So our consortium is open to reserving items from not just our library, but the other libraries we share our collection with. So the very first day, they opened it two days before we knew. So the first day, we had 40 reserved holes, and then the second day, 267 holes. So, and then when I talked to Twin Falls, they had 1,000 holes. So it's going to be a really good thing to be sharing collections with each other. It's 1.5 million items. So we're excited about that. Also, we have newly installed accessibility doors up in the commons area. What this means that with a press of a button, somebody in a wheelchair or somebody with crutches can have the door open for them. That is something that I have noticed over the years, a big need. You know, it's one thing that we have the front doors with that accessibility feature, but now we have all three of our doors. And that was thanks to a grant that we applied for through the American Library Association. So we're excited to have that all ready to go now. Our Friends of the Library is having our Celebration Week for them next week, and we are going to actually cater a meal during their normal monthly meeting. So we wanted to say thank you for all the hard work that they do every year for our library. Our story stroll feature story is to help recognize our fire department. And it's Pete the Cat Goes to the Firehouse. And we had our special story narrator, Brian Reed, the fire marshal, narrate that one. And I had a patron actually send me a picture of them on the story stroll today, so that was cool to see. We also have, along with our normal weekly events, we're partnering with the Arts Council with a couple of programs. So this Friday night, they're doing their Whistle Pig Volume 15 journal release party, and that's at 7:00 PM at the library. Open Mic Night is the following Friday. And then on the 27th, they're doing a Living Voices presentation, Through the Eyes of a Friend. And I've been to one of those presentations before, and it's fantastic. Talking about different parts of history. The one I went to was about women's suffrage, and I believe this one is about Anne Frank. So it's well worth your time. And I know that funding like that is not cheap for those kinds of programs. And then we also have some other history programs on Saturdays. The Johnstown Flood Book, and then as well as the 60th Anniversary of JFK's Assassination presentation on the 21st. And then we're also doing our interactive movie night. And I wanted it noted that it is a PG-13 movie, Little Shop of Horrors. The interactive movie has the proms and a little bag of props to go along with the movie and along with the music. So we're excited about that as well. And I think, yep, that's all I had.
Thank you. Paul?
Nothing, ma'am.
Tiff?
Councilwoman Garvey and council personnel policies. Daniel and I got those to you guys. You have them electronically. They are in track change mode, so we can see the edits. And then you got a hard copy in your baskets. We're asking if you can please bring your questions and edits to us so we can make one hard copy for discussion on the 26th. We have a master in our office, so if you don't want to make electronic changes, we can sit down and fum through it and highlight and make your notes in that document, so. And then Readers Become Leaders, we're still on for next Monday, the 16th. I think I've talked to each of you individually about the schools. We're just fine-tuning whether they're going to do two classrooms at a time or one, and they're trying to get me the PDF so you all can pre-read before you get in there. So, but just so you know, that book, AIC, we donate it to each of the school libraries, so it'll be within that, and every student gets a workbook that kind of shows them a day in the life of a city employee, so, yeah. So I will get you, Sierra and I were working through some of that today via email, so hopefully tomorrow we have it all ironed out and it's in calendar invites.
Okay, great. Thanks, Tiff. Paula?
Council, you came through the fight, you'll see the lobby TV, the informational board's up and running. So we'll be a little, Sue's getting trained on that Wednesday. We'll put flyers from the departments up there and other city information that needs to go on there. And then this bill run is the final bill run for the budget. Very exciting. The audit starts live. Right after that, Cassie will come out and do field work. So you'll see her out here. And then Josh is going to do a spot check, and then he will come back after Thanksgiving. So we'll have almost three little audits right in a row.
Great, thank you. Council?
Councilwoman Garvey?
Yes.
If, Paul, if you can help me, I want to make sure this is allowed by public meeting law, but I'd like to make a motion to change the order of the agenda, moving, recognizing persons in the audience before we go into executive session.
Second.
Okay, oh, sorry. No, go ahead.
Councilwoman? It actually is, there's, there's a tie. I duplicated it.
I see that now, yeah. Okay.
I was a little confused where you're going with that.
Yeah, my apologies.
Okay.
Any final comments, Tiff, too?
Yes.
We'll be tacking a lot. Okay, so then, all right, never mind, okay. All right, so we will move on down to.
Sorry.
Oh, excuse me.
Do we need to make a special notation for prepayment?
Councilwoman Garvey has.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we will go down to the conflict of interest declaration. Has any council member received any information pertaining to or otherwise had any contact with any person regarding any items on this city council agenda? So please set forth the nature of contact. Hearing none, we'll move down to the consent agenda. And I would like to call for a motion to amend the agenda tonight to add Burris to pay for the tennis court resurface. In our packets was an estimate, and we cannot pay on estimates, and so it did not make it into the bill run. So if I can get a motion to add payment for Burris in the amount of $55,048.17 coming out of the Parks Department budget, please?
It's my understanding they've already begun the work, right? So I would go ahead and make that motion to pay that bill.
Hold on. It was a motion to amend the agenda to.
Oh, okay. I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to include payment. Oh, okay. I will make a motion to agenda, to amend the agenda to include payment.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion on the table. There's, let's see, first and a second. So I will call for a question. Councilman Brennan?
Aye.
Councilman Bundy?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman McGarry? Aye. Okay. So we'll move down to the consent agenda. Are there any items that anybody would like to talk about or poll on the consent agenda?
Councilman McGarry?
Uh, Councilman Brennan?
Question Tiffany, I'm going, I probably ask this question every time. I apologize for that. The airport hangar lease stuff, items E and F. This is land lease only with their intentions of building a brand new hangar in that space. Is that right?
That's correct.
I'm happy to see that with, with the, let me pull that out of my pocket. I noticed, I can admit that these numbers are not probably, probably any different than they have been in recent years. But the annual, annual rent amount for the land kind of blows my mind as to how low it is. Have we, has this council entered into discussion about changing that at all?
Councilman Brennan, to my knowledge, since I've sat in this seat, we have not discussed adjusting the square footage. So it's based off of a square footage of land. And we have not discussed amending that at this point.
Is that simply our, our city's policy? Or is that like a regional, national rate for?
It's just city policy, Paul.
We talked about it about, you were here. You were here. But we talked about it maybe five years ago. And at the time, I believe it was something that we were comparing on a regional, if not national basis. But we talked about it back then that we were going to revisit it. And we just, we hadn't done that. That was like five years ago.
That's my thought. I seem to have some kind of memory of this happening. And.
If you recall, when I first became the city attorney, I was going cuckoo over the language of some of those leases. And we changed, Nina was the clerk at the time, and we changed it around then. But I remember we talked about it back then that we needed to come back about what is a reasonable amount? What should the time duration be? And then there was a comparison of the people like this one, where it's a real property, where the person was going to be actually constructing a hangar. And then so to get bank loans and proper ROI, that was for longer term leases. But if it was already a hangar, it wasn't going to be a long term leases. So we had quite a bit of discussion about that. And then also was coming in about whether, if you recall, people were putting things other than airplanes in there. So we had all kinds of chats about that back then.
So I guess for the, for the record, right, I don't want to talk in code here. We're talking a lease agreement of $240 annually to have a hangar on, which this is a 20-year lease agreement. That, that brings in a whopping $4,800 over 20 years. I, I want to see the growth at the airport, but not at, not at the cost of the, on the back. Like that $240 doesn't pay for Paul to write the lease agreement up or to make, to make the required changes here. So I'm not willing to move forward at that rate, $240 a year. Paragraph 11, Paul, this is mostly just kind of a request for your suggestion here. Under assignment or sublease, I don't know if we've had problems here before, but it says the leasing shall not assign this lease nor sublet any portion of the, what is it, demised premises without first obtaining the written consent of the city, which shall not be unreasonably withheld. I don't particularly like the without unreasonably withheld. It's kind of super vague in my mind. And after, after 20 years, I don't, I don't want this to be a perpetual lease just because one side wants it to be.
Okay, let me unpack that. 20 year lease is one thing. Again, come back to discuss, frank discussion with the lender and the lessy about the ROI and the terms of being able to build this asset that will then become a fixture to the land, i.e. it can't be removed when the lease is over. That's one thing. Second thing is that term of art, that what I want in there, I think I probably wrote it. What I want in there is that there cannot be a merely be, if you're going out of business and you need to get out of there, you don't just get to turn it over to whoever you want to. We need to be able to vet that. However, that term shall not be unreasonably withheld is a term of art, boilerplate language that is pretty routine that we see in there. So that it's not up to the whims of the politics, as it were. If you could find somebody that's in a light position, financially stable, et cetera, et cetera, continue on with it. Doesn't mean it goes beyond the 20 years, but it does mean that for that 20 year term, which admittedly, when I first came on here, I thought that was exorbitantly too long. But I've been persuaded by the financing of these structures that there should be two different leases. One, structure already built, and you're renewing that lease, which we had a ton. And then the second is when you're really building something new. As to the $240, $2,400, whatever that is.
$240 a year.
Yeah. As to whether that is still a reasonable amount, I don't know. But it's certainly something worth exploring. It always struck me as being low, but on the same token, what does it cost to build a hangar, et cetera, et cetera? And then what is the marketability of that hangar for your plane or other people's planes in other cities that shall go unnamed? We have a real problem with people putting in cars and junk. And basically, the complaint came from those, from the storage unit people saying, hold on, I can't compete with this. You're putting me out of business because they're using these hangars as storage facilities. And so there's, there always needs to be strict language that it could only be used for that, subject to inspection at any time. If you use it for something other than a majority basis as for a use of an airplane, then you'll be in breach of the lease, et cetera, et cetera, stuff like that.
Not only is this a 20 year lease, but, but the leasing has the option at their request to extend for an additional 20 years. So that's a 40 year lease. And the Consumer Price Index adjustment over that time, I can imagine will be mere dollars at best.
I'm against renewals. That part I'm against. But I have been persuaded that the 20 year term might be what is possible. You're going to obtain the proper financing to be able to construct it.
I have no problem with the length of the term because I know what you're saying. They're going to build something. They need something there for the, for the banks or whatever they're going through. I'd like to just basically make a motion to table item E and F from the agenda so the council can discuss the inappropriate rent amount.
Are you finished for a minute?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Paul, I have a couple of quick questions. I too read that the lease will automatically renew for 20 years. And I'm at $240. I mean, I would, I would continue to renew it just to have it out there. The other thing I had.
Most of us won't be alive when it comes up.
And I will not be sitting here. I had a question. There's nothing in here that speaks about insurance. Now, I recognize that you wouldn't necessarily insure bare land. However, once construction starts, there's the something to insure. So there's just nothing in here about having insurance, maintaining insurance. Is that, was that, was that a miss, missing part of the contract that I didn't see? Or is it just not there for a reason?
It's not, it is not not there for a reason. And you're correct, you're, you're correct in recognizing that there's a difference between bare ground.
Yeah.
And what are you insuring with bare ground versus a structure? And so I think that's the reason why it's not there. However, being that you're getting an extent, so when we talk about in contract law, you, this for that, quid pro quo. So, and that term is called consideration. So what is the consideration for having such an extended lease and why it's not just a five year term? And that's because you're creating an asset that eventually will injure to the city and to the citizenry, which is a hangar. And so if that's the case, why would we give you this long term if you weren't going to ensure that it's still there because of the fire? And then more importantly, if the fire would extend to not only that person's hangar, but the hangar next to that and damaged airplane? So I think that probably you're right. I think probably that is something that I would think is, look at it this way. This person is not going to be able to get financing to build it without it being insured.
Right. We just don't have it written down.
This is practical math. So the, us adding a clause in there saying that you, that as a term of the lease, you are, have this as a term of the lease, and that an added beneficiary would be the city of Mountain Home, that would be prudent.
Okay. So we'll work on that once we, well, actually, I'm sorry, we have a motion on the table.
So just to point a clarification, do we, do we, do we just pull E and F?
Yes.
To our new, to, excuse me.
Just pull E and F.
To new business to be able to table it further from there? Is that the correct procedure?
You mean removing something from?
From the consent agenda, it goes to the new, it goes to new business, and then we table it from there. Is that correct?
Good. Robert's rules of order over there. Yes, the proper procedure is to pull it from the consent decree, add it to new business, and then table it. However, I'm not too anal about Robert's rules of order. If you were to table it to a date certain, I think implicit in that is to remove it from the consent agenda. So it's okay. But you are actually correct in the process.
I just wanted to make sure we get it right.
Okay. We need a motion to remove it, please.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Wait, wait, wait.
Removing E and F.
I still have questions.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
That's all right. Okay. So am I, everybody else good? Okay. So if we're going to move off of E and F, I have some questions on the bill run. So this is two weeks in a row that our general fund admin department, water and wastewater, have paid to repair a bore rig. Now, there's a couple of things that are kind of striking me on this. And Paula, this obviously is your, your gig here, but why, why are these dated 531 and 616? And they're just now coming to our bill run. And did you get an answer from Cassie to remove it off of the asset list for the city?
Councilman McGarry, I'm guessing the delay in the bills was because the vendor had not submitted them. So we did a follow up on our side because we had some, what are they called? Performa?
Performa.
Invoices. And we can't pay from those. So we contacted Brenner back and said, we need actual invoices. And so they sent those because we're finalizing our bill run. And I didn't talk to Cassie. I talked to Josh with Harrison Co. because they're the ones that do the assets.
Okay.
And he said, yes, it is being split correctly because it's an asset for the city. However, those departments paid for the bore rig.
So, okay. I just, it's, it's now, let's see, two, four, six, eight, 10, $12,000. It was $8,000. And I guess the mayor's not here to answer, why are we spending that amount of money? Tiff, do you know?
I mean, that's a lot of money to repair this bore rig two months in a row. Um, and the councilman, in the tidbits, I've heard back and forth in some of the bore rig, some of it was just routine maintenance that needed serviced. And then we had some actual parts that needed fixed and then repaired on the rig. So I think those are, I can't speak to other, what parts they were. I do know this operator's seat, whatever locks that into position that had broke. And so that seat was loosely just flopping, and that had to be maintained and repaired. But I can't tell you exactly penny for penny what parts on the machine got fixed. I have no idea.
I guess, and, you know, I guess if the rest of the council doesn't have a problem with it, then we'll just move on. But I, I just, the bore rig is a fiber, may not be an asset as it's listed on our taxes, but, not our taxes, excuse me, our audit. I just have a problem with the city administration budget, the water and the wastewater paying for that. When we all approve our budget, we don't approve it not knowing what's going to be fixed out of the city hall budget. I, I would like to see that, that bore rig be placed under the LID because it's, it's, that's where it's getting used at. And if that takes that we need to move the asset out of city hall and water and wastewater, then I, I feel strongly that's what we need to do. It's, it's a fiber asset. It was paid for by admin, and it was paid for by water, and it was paid for by wastewater because we didn't have the money in fiber to pay for it. And that's why the mayor presented it that way to us. And I'm sorry, he's not here tonight to speak a little bit more to that. But I don't know what that looks like, but I will send an email. I'm just, I want it for the record. I have a problem with this being paid out of those three budgets. So I don't want to pull it, but I just wanted to be sure, say what I, how I felt about that. But anybody else have any comments on it?
Councilman McGarry?
Uh, Councilman Brennan?
Is, is, is this bore rig not capable of being used by water and wastewater?
Nope.
And it's never been used for any of their job performances?
It has not.
Paul, I'm reading soon. Councilman McGarry?
Uh, Councilman.
Well, I think that's the question that we need to answer is, has this been used for other purposes and what they are? So I don't disagree. I just, we need a definitive answer on that. It seems like I've heard, but I can't definitively say that it's been used other places that it has other capabilities. But we do need to answer that question. So.
Mr. Yurkidi, maybe you can answer the question. How often do you use the bore rig?
Do we use it?
Yes.
We've boards, I think we board water, a water line at the airport one time. That's all we've done.
At the airport? Okay. So not water and wastewater?
We board a water line over to the training facility for the training facility. So we've used it for that. We use the bore rig to do the backbone for the entire city.
For fiber?
Yeah.
For fiber.
Well, it's for the city to use.
Yeah. I know. I'm just, I'm just, I think it, I think it belongs in the LID. So we, I will, I'll drop my, I will, I will. We will move on. Councilman Brennan?
Rich, is this, is this also the same piece of equipment that Doug under, or board under Mashburn Road for the, for the water recharge project?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Okay. So we need to have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
That was already, I already made that motion. Pulling E and F.
Okay.
Second top.
Okay. We have a first and second. So I will call for the role, Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Bundy?
Aye.
Councilman Brennan?
Aye.
Uh, Councilman McGarry? Aye. Okay. We'll move down to old business. Looks like you're it tonight. The deliberation decision on the Melon Water District land lease.
Yeah. Council members, my name is Tom Horgan. I'm a member of the Melon Water Board, and I'm filling in for Erica as a spokesperson, which she is a lot better. So it's my duty to report that we have nothing new to report. Unfortunately, we have not heard back from any of the bids on the well, our options. And we haven't heard anything from the, the video, the, the people that were supposed to look at the video and, and let us know more about it, too. So hopefully, within the next two weeks, they said ASAP, they would have it to us. But we'll see. So.
Okay. Well, thank you for the update.
Yeah. Sorry, we didn't have any good news. But, and I want to thank whoever's responsible for Fifth Street. I have lived in my house, my home, for 44 years. And for the first time, I can go home without dodging a pothole. So that is excellent. And I appreciate your patience on our, our matter. So.
Thank you.
So much.
Councilman Brennan?
Question for you?
Sure.
I ask this question every time now. You've probably seen it. But after the last one, Erica told us you were leaving here to go to a, like a monthly board meeting.
Uh-huh.
Have you guys decided to?
Have you guys decided to address the issue with your, members of your water district yet? Or is it strictly within the?
It's, no, it's ongoing with, oh, as far as the district, it should have been posted on our, we have a board, community board out there and it should have been, I apologize, I've been out of town. I, I don't know if it is currently posted, but it was supposed to be posted to keep them updated and, you know, we don't want to, I think she mentioned that, too, to cause a mass panic. But we do, obviously, it's in their right to know what's going on, so.
Isn't that right? You know, me personally, right, I think it's, I think the more notice you can give them about a soon-to-be increased bill is probably in everyone's best interest.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, is word of mouth spreading amongst, amongst the neighborhood?
I'm kind of quiet on my corner, but it has, yeah. I speak, talk to as many people as I can and, you know, they're aware of the situation and, yeah, I just wish we had more information to tell them.
Sure.
So, but I definitely appreciate your patience and, you know, handling this, so.
Councilwoman McGarvey?
Councilwoman Green?
I just want to say thank you very much for you guys continually coming in and keeping us up to date.
Oh, you bet.
The communication has been great, as of late.
Well, I appreciate that, yeah. I'm getting a little tired of it, but, no, that's great. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, we will go down to new business. Items removed from the consent agenda, items E and F.
Councilwoman McGarvey?
Councilwoman Green?
I would like to basically table these two items for further review. I do, I do also think that the price is a little bit low.
Do I have a second?
I'll say, yeah, second.
Okay, all right. We have a motion, we have a second. Okay, I'll call for this, and Councilwoman Brennan?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bundy?
Aye.
Councilwoman Green? Councilwoman McGarvey, aye. Okay, we'll move on to action item, deliberation decision on planning and zoning's commission recommendation to approve a conditional use permit to allow for a propane storage facility in an I-2 zoning district located between the 700 and 800 block of Highway 30, requested by Gary Toller on behalf of Hyler Brothers.
Councilwoman McGarvey?
Councilwoman Bundy?
So, is this, I don't know who the expert is here, Rich or, okay, so is this mainly we're just moving it?
So, the plan, the ultimate plan is, this is the first of a couple of phases to create bulk fuel storage in, um...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's going to be, I don't know if they're eventually going to do everything, but this is the start. And there is some talk that eventually that will be the final move.
Okay. Okay, thanks. And needless to say, I mean, they've been a major economic partner with the community for decades, so I appreciate they coming in here and letting us, letting us do this, so, thanks. It's kind of a move, but a possible expansion at the same time. Thank you.
Chris, I have a question. Um, I page two, and I don't know, I didn't, unfortunately, couldn't find the federal and state law placement requirement, but a property owner advised that the location of the tank exceeds the federal and state law placement requirement of 50 feet from an active. So, if I read that correctly, that's okay. We're going the further 30 feet.
Correct.
Okay.
So, council, I can, I can give you a little bit of background on that. We did some research after the P and Z meeting. The requirements are that this tank of this size, 30,000 gallon, has to be 50 feet from the rail line, has to be 50 feet from a property line, and 50 feet from a residence. Currently, where it's placed is 80 feet from a rail line, and it's 150 feet from property lines, and it's 450 feet from the nearest residence. So, it exceeds all of those requirements.
Yeah, okay, okay, thank you, thank you. I just want to make sure I wrote that down, please.
Councilwoman McGarvey?
Uh, Councilwoman Brennan?
Appreciate that question. I asked the same one earlier to Chris because there was no follow-up in the report as to, if that had been verified. My, to add to that, since I was going to speak to that, is, section D on page two, where there was concerns about age corrosion, safety inspections of the propane tank. The applicant advised that the tank is inspected by a certified company annually as required by law. Chris, were you able to find out or?
So, Mr. Hyler is here.
Okay.
And he has those answers. He was kind of prepped for it, so.
So, can you come forward?
You can come up here. You trumped him? Gary, come up, come on, guys will all come up.
I had a Gary. The crew is all here. I'm Tom Hyler, the owner of Hyler Brothers Oil Company. Councilwoman Brennan, I'd just say that all of our tanks, either location where they're across from Commercial Tire where they're at now, all of our takes are, there's, there's one year, five year, and 10 years that have to be done on the tanks. So, all of our tanks fall into that category. We have a U.S. Department of Transportation, which is a federal inspector that inspected this tank. He actually plumbed it and put it all together and certified the tank. There's absolutely no issues with the tank.
And what, so, and this tank specifically, is there, it has to be inspected every one year for some things, five years for some things, and 10 for others?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have all the paperwork on that that documents that.
And who mandates those inspections?
U.S. Department of Transportation.
Okay. Is that because of the rail line or?
No. Anytime that you have hazardous materials stored somewhere, there are regulations on that, how often those storage facilities have to be tested.
Okay.
And I did look it up, and the DOT regulates all above-ground bulk storage facilities.
Of all types of hazardous materials?
Yep.
Okay. My, my request was that, I have no problem with your development. I would just like to put a condition on the conditional use permit, is that any, any inspections that have to be done, do you forward them to the city within, within 30 days of the inspection?
I don't know if we've done it yet. I think we have, but we usually, even at our other plant, provide those to the fire marshal. And that's where they, that's so that the firemen know exactly what's going on with the tank all the time.
Right.
So, but we can provide that to wherever you want it.
I just think that the city has a duty to make sure people are protected around it. And, and something to that nature, whether it's a leak or an explosion, would have vast impacts around it. And so, I think if we can answer to the citizens that we've, we've had eyes on all required inspection reports. And my, I always believe there has to be teeth in something. So, 30 days from the date of inspection, we get a copy or else the conditional use permit is withheld at that point.
Sounds good.
I talked to Paul earlier, and we're all good with that. Would you agree to that?
No problem. We have to do it anyway, have it, have it done, so if somebody else wants to look at them, that's great.
Perfect. And Chris had mentioned that he can put those in an electronic file for all conditional use permits so that it's an easy storage and find, find the documents on that.
I was just going to say, basically, that, I think that's great. Go to a permissional use file, but also to the fire marshal. And that seems to be agreeable to you.
Yeah, and to answer your previous questions, I don't know exactly how this is going to go. I mean, I think you guys know it's a little tight over there where we're at, across from Commercial Tire. It's a little hard getting our transports in and out of there. I'm sure a lot of people in the city would like to see some less congestion there. We just think this is a bigger facility. Mountain Home is growing, the needs of fuel in and around Mountain Home have tremendously grown, and we just think this is better for everybody. We're going to fix it up, it's going to be first class, and, you know, we're going to do a nice landscaping across the front and, you know, everything paved in and out, and it's going to be a nice facility. And, kind of proud to say that my uncle finally sold me the property, and it's no longer going to be the whole thing an urban habitat where animals are going to be out there and whatever else, I will tell you, there was more goat heads than anything, but I think this is going to look really nice in our community.
Councilwoman McGarvey? Tom, is 30 days enough time to provide that report back to us, or would 45 days? I know that some of our tanks, when we've had them inspected, to get those back from, there's a little bit of delay in time specific at the airport. So, I just want to make sure that 30 days is fair enough notice to you.
Probably if you would maybe state it as 30 days from the time of receipt of the, of the report from the agency.
So, that gives you time to turn in and look at it.
Because in some of their line of work, they go out on site inspected, they go back and write a report, and then they're going to send it to them.
As we all know, federal agencies sometimes are a little bit cumbersome.
Okay.
Any else?
Council?
Councilwoman McGarvey?
Councilwoman Green?
I will make a motion to, uh...
Thank you.
To approve the, the planning and zoning commission's recommendation to approve a conditional use permit to allow a propane storage facility in an I-2 zoning district located between the 700 and 800 block of Highway 30, requested by Gary Toller on behalf of Hyler Brothers, with the additional conditions stated in interlineation.
Can you state the conditions, please?
Can I jump in and do that?
Sure.
The conditions? The, the condition would be that the applicant must provide, within 30 days of receipt, all inspections that are mandated by state and federal government. And failure to do so will result in a loss of the conditional use permit.
So, we have a team motion, I'll have to make the second.
Second.
Okay. I will call for the question, Councilwoman Brennan?
Aye.
Uh, Councilwoman Bundy?
Aye.
Councilwoman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman McGarvey?
Aye.
Okay. We will move down to recognizing persons in the audience. Please limit your comments to a maximum of three minutes. Is there anybody that would like to come up and speak? Don't everybody jump up. Okay. Uh, are there any final?
Who wants to talk?
Oh. Rich? Do you have any final comments for us?
I do.
Do you have any updates for us?
I do. Okay, so, the water, um, Madam President, Councilwoman, sorry, I'm late, I was working at the cross-country meeting, so, I've done, kind of a couple of things. Sewer line, the sewer project, they're going to, that should be paved on the October 23rd on Eighth Street, so they're going to, I think all the lines are in right now for that first phase of the project, and they're going to start getting some of the concrete, couple of concrete things fixed up, and so that's, that'll be done here next couple of weeks. Fifth Street, obviously, you've seen that, so it's been, they've got the center stripe on. We haven't put any of the white fog lines because we're going to figure out how we want to do that. So, we just need to figure out what's going on, so that's, it'll just have the center line for a little while. That, that project is finished up, and I think it came out really, really, really nice in two weeks to get that done. That was pretty good. Just waiting for everybody to get it done. The water line project is pretty much buttoned up, just a couple of little things to finish up here and there, but they're pretty much done with that project also, so, you know, end of, end of October, all of our projects should be, you know, finished up and ready to go, you know, where we, where we need to be. That's really, those are the big things that I had. I did have a question, and you tabled, I apologize I wasn't here for the hanger question, but you tabled that, was there a question that you had with something?
Several items.
Rich, the, first of all, we tabled it to discuss the lease amount at $240 a year for 20 years.
Yeah, so, kind of, I can answer kind of some of that. So, with, with the airport, and there's only certain things that we can have out on the airport in, inside the gate. So, five cents per square foot is really the going rate for airports in, all over, and that's really what that is. So, it's five cents per square foot, and then it does jump by the CIP once it starts. So, and most of, everything is 20-year leases when we do those things, because they're putting in, you know, he's, he has everything ordered, I mean, he's, he really wants to get going on it. So, that was kind of my question I had with that. So, but that is really the going lease with most airports all around for what we have with hangerspace. So, because they're just leasing that little, you know, little spot, so. But, I mean, if we want to look at doing more, I mean, that's, you know, that's what all of our leases at the airport pretty much start at the five cents per square foot, and that, and my understanding, talking with, you know, our consultant with JUB, that's pretty much what they are in a lot of the airports, so.
So, if we tabled it for the next two weeks, do you, do you believe you could get us back kind of a solid? That is what it goes for around, if you talk to JUB?
I mean, I can, I mean, I know that's what we've done in the past, and Caldwell, Napa, and the area around here, that's what they've been, so. But, I mean, yeah, I can, I can find that more, but...
Well, the portion of the discussion you missed, and stop me if I'm over speaking, but was, that, there was discussion about five years ago that we needed to increase the rates for these land leases, and it just has never happened.
Okay.
So, that's what we discussed.
Okay, that's, yeah, I can, I can look at that.
Yeah, so if you could maybe come back with a little bit more information on that, some going rates and... Rich, I have a, I have a request. There's a very large pothole on Sixth Street and Eighth Street that's pretty deep, and it gets filled, and then it gets, and it's, it's pretty treacherous. If you could maybe relay to them?
Is it right there on the corner?
It's on, yeah, it's on that, that dirt strip.
Let me just put that in there. I noticed somebody slowed down on that today, so, yeah, you can get on to that.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
I hit it.
We'll get that in the morning.
Once your voice.
Twice, you just missed the first one.
It will not be over time, I'm sorry, because I was like, holy smokes. Okay, anyway.
Yeah, we'll get on in the morning.
Okay, thank you. Are there any final comments from the council? Councilwoman Brennan?
Rich, I have a request, too. I noticed that our maps were updated earlier this summer with the new bulk of city limits around the interstate and whatnot. Can, I don't know if you're allowed to, but can you, if you're not, can you coordinate with ITD to get new postings of where entering city limits sign, as, as you see on like interstates and stuff, or highways, entering the city limits of Mountain Home right here, population, whatever, to move that current sign to show where, where the line is at now?
Okay.
Are you tracking?
Mhm.
Okay.
Because it's right there on, it's right when you pull out on the interstate, I know where it's at now.
Okay, I appreciate that, because now, now we've got, oh, probably, well, it looks to be almost a solid mile or so versus our prior, like quarter of a mile with all of the 95 interchange within the city limits now.
Okay, I, oh, because of the top part, got it. Okay. Because that, because some of that's just on that map is just the zoning pieces, and they're not annexed in yet, so, okay.
Okay.
Can do it.
I had one more thing, but I forgot. The, the well? How's it coming along as far as operations?
So, yeah, so, they've sent the, all the design reports to DEQ, they're just looking at it right now, so we're looking at probably trying to get it out to bid in December, January, so.
Okay.
And we're still on track with all of our, I mean, our timeline for our grants and things like that.
True.